Hey, welcome everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. So this is a regular city council meeting. Please put away all electronic devices and cell phones. Except explicitly as authorized under Texas government code five five one point oh two three. I call this meeting to order five thirty P M. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Hey, thank you. Please be seated. Seems like my Siri is real excited about participating in this meeting. From my watch. Alright, so thank you for being here. We currently have a quorum city secretary with all council members here and present proof of notice of meeting, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by February second at.
Okay, thank you. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
We do. First up, we have Reagan Stone, Ward one, commenting on resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two dash zero six.
Okay, Mr. Stone, please approach the podium, state your name and ward, and remember, council cannot respond.
My name is Reagan Stone. I'm a resident of Ward one. Your mayor Eves and council members. I'm here today to voice my opposition to resolution zero or twenty twenty four zero two oh zero six, which on its face claims to fund Alpine's police department with dollars from the state of Texas's Operation Lone Star. Now, I'm all for free money and for supporting our law enforcement. Therefore, I understand the city manager's recommendation to pass this resolution. However, I want to call attention to the fact that the resolution does, in fact, have major strings attached. First, as the resolution currently stands, quote, "The city council authorizes any additional or matching funds needed," end quote. Unfortunately, that does not constitute free money. Second, the resolution also authorizes, quote, "The city police department to participate in the office of the governor's public safety office, Office Operation Lone Star." You may have heard that Operation Lone Star is our governor's method of stopping, quote, "the smuggling of people and drugs into Texas," end quote, "and deteriorating or deterring or arresting migrants attempting to cross the Texas-Mexico border." But did you know that Operation Lone Star has only cost lives and millions of Texas tax dollars? Operation Lone Star has already cost our state taxpayers more than a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. Instead of using high-tech, human-focused solutions, Governor Abbott made Operation Lone Star so that crossing the border would be more cruel and inhumane experience for all involved. Even the citizens of the towns on the border continue to be hurt. Did you know that since the start of Operation Lone Star, at least seventy-four people have been killed and another hundred and eighty-nine injured as a result of vehicular pursuits in in those counties? That is a rate of nearly three deaths and seven injuries per month since O L S has been in existence. Among those killed was a seven-year-old girl, and among those injured were five children, all of them Texans. Not only that, our neighbors in Eagle Pass have had their parks, their walking trails, boat ramps, and roads seized by the state so that razor wire and a wall of buoys could be installed. Abbott faces lawsuits from the Justice Department and a local business owner over the buoys, arguing they're a public safety hazard, as well as a threat to the environment and diplomatic relations with Mexico. In the resolution, our council is being encouraged to sign off on tonight. It states that the city of Alpine is, quote, "committed to provide the safety and welfare of its citizens," end quote. I implore our council to consider the fact that Operation Lone Star may seem like a quick, easy, and noble solution to funding our law enforcement and keeping our streets safe, but it is, in fact, dangerous backwards and doomed bit of political theater that is sure to go down on the wrong side of history. It not only puts our funds up for future debate at the state's discretion, further deteriorating local rule, but it also puts our officers and our citizens in unnecessary danger. There are five-plus law enforcement agencies working in Alpine. Why can't we reserve the efforts of our local law enforcement to tackle one of those town's most despicable criminal?
Mr. Stone, yes, your time is up.
May I have a moment to finish this paragraph?
If you can do it in thirty seconds.
Absolutely. Uh, why is our, what, which is domestic violence? Why don't we leave immigration to the hundreds of federal officers already stationed in our communities? Last, in the Big Ben sector, illegal immigration encounters are down nearly seventy percent. The problem isn't here. With all of this known, I ask for you to at least table this resolution and consider distancing yourself from Operation Lone Star. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Alright, City Secretary, any other public comments?
That concludes public comments.
Okay, so public comments are concluded. No presentations, recognitions, or proclamations. City Mayor report, City Secretary, please set the timer for six minutes. For the first time in a long time, it's gonna be very short. Surprise. Okay, so I just wanted to update everybody regarding right now what the community is working on is the Fourth of July celebration. As some of you may have heard, Rhonda Cole is stepping down from leading the fireworks and the parade and the happenings at the park. She's stepping down. The Kiwanis is still taking it at the Lions Club today. There were two Kiwanis, Donna Ward Blevins and James Etchison, who were there. What they're looking for is different community groups to come together to help divide up the labor, because Rhonda and her mother were, they were a driving force, and it takes multiple people to replace what they did. And they're also gonna speak with the Women's Club, the American Legion, and different organizations to see what each group can do. Ideas also are being suggested that this might be a good time to reconsider or reevaluate, to decide what we as a community want to do. Do we want to take it back to the courthouse like it used to be back in the nineties and before that? Do we want to just have local vendors like they used to have? Soul Ross Art doing the face painting, different groups doing different things. So that's something that if you are interested in, reach out to Donna Ward Blevins or James Etchison. Abby Branch is also helping with this from Historic Alpine. Any ideas or thoughts, anything like that? And that will conclude the mayor report for this evening. I know y'all are all shocked. I am feeling okay, so. Alright, no city attorney report. City manager, I guess you can have some of my extra time.
I'm gonna have to. Okay, so this is gonna be probably one of the longest reports because there's a lot of information. I'm gonna try to talk relatively fast, so if you have a commoner question, please talk. The first item for discussion is the update on the city of Alpine's employee compression and wage increase analysis. So in the budget process, the council provided fifty thousand dollars to go out for a third-party vendor to come in and assist the city. In the meantime, as we work through this, we've pulled all of the city council-approved job descriptions from two thousand eighteen to present. That took us a little bit of time, because in eighteen, the city council approved all of the positions all at once. And then moving forward, we've had them approved kind of like a one-by-one piecemeal as we're working through this. So we want to make sure we had at least the most up-to-date information to provide. I've currently researched with other cities and counties, including Leander, Waller County, Portland, Texas, Kingsville, Texas, Horseshoe Bay, and Huntsville. They've all submitted requests for proposals or qualifications regarding specifically the compression, job description, job structure, organizational structure, um, to get kind of an idea. One, what did they propose? What did they ask for? What was their budget? Um, and kind of what did they get in return? Um, all of them have been forthcoming and actually really supportive and agree they should have done it sooner when they did it. So they've all done theirs within the past four years. The draft R F P has been started, and a few things are being changed after I recently spoke to Huntsville. Theirs is the oldest R F P, um, but it was the most detailed. And so, um, I finally was able to get a full document, and they've had that turnover as well. That could kind of say this is what they bought for what they paid. So that should be going out, um, hopefully within this month. It is a mandatory. We have to advertise it for, you know, two weeks straight, minimum, the fourteen days. Um, we already do have an interested party in doing, um, helping us with our compression or salaries or job descriptions or structure, and they are currently assisting from it in Texas. So Mr. Lunt and I have actually kind of messaged each other, probably, hey, yes, we're still moving forward with it, and we are interested. The update on departments and priority projects. Any questions on the first one?
Well.
Good question. Um, when, so from the the employee's perspective, when would pay raises actually materialize?
So the concept is, is we included the five percent cost of living and the five percent merit in this year's budget. The actual switch over on the compression and changes would be for October. So it'd be part of this year's budget to move forward if we need to or not.
Mr. Stevens.
So I thought part of them, maybe we're gonna bring up, you know, salary to fifty dollars an hour.
Yes, that is part of it.
And so when will that happen? Not till October?
So depending on what they come back with on what we exactly need to do, that is in October, because a lot of our employees, only the new hires are currently being at the thirteen fifty, and we have the ability to to get the merit raise, um, I felt that it was uncomfortable to hit it October first.
Okay, so on October first, we should expect fifty dollars an hour, so.
The starting break, yes. Now, not all of our employees, this is where that compression comes in. So during, so I sat down just to give you a background to understand. If I come in at thirteen fifty and our say came in in August, I got five percent automatically October first, because I'm employed with the city and it's a cost of living. I get one certification, depending on which department I am, and I'm automatically a dollar to or forty-eight cents to a dollar ahead, and then I still have my merit raise. So within a twelve, thirteen-month time span, I can go from thirteen fifty to fifty ninety-eight. So there's no reason an employee can make more money. They just can't expect the, we're gonna give it to you. We want you to do your job. We want you to get trained. We want you to get your certifications, and we're gonna move you up.
Okay, so well, as part of then, employer retention is the fundamental issue, as well as the skills. Will you start giving us some sense going forward, since almost all the jobs are full, about how we're doing retention?
So I do have currently the open positions.
Okay.
Um, you want me to go into that part?
Wherever you are in the process, just, how many jobs do we have? Ballpark, because I thought we're, so we got eight out of roughly a hundred?
Yes.
And how many have we lost in the last six months ballpark? I'm not after a, whatever number.
Three.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Okay, okay, that's good. So so long as we keep our people there, we got time to work.
And this last go-around with applications, we actually had probably the most applications we've had in the past year. We had seven applications.
Okay, so out of those three, does that include one who left for family reasons?
Resignation, yes.
Okay. Did we attend the A I S D?
That's not till the sixteenth of February.
And we are.
And we have three departments who are.
Good deal. Hey, Councilwoman Nance, did you raise your hand?
One last question I was gonna ask is, will this R F P actually, will there be any changes to from the school side stipends or anything else? So from this side, I'm thinking when you get a class A, class B, or whatever else like that, is there any change to how that will be structured as far as when they their raises end?
So that's why Huntsville was quite important, because they restructured their, what we're calling certification or differential pay. And so we went from everyone having the availability to have something to only a select few being able to have something, and I want to do kind of a combination of the both. And that's where I wanted to add that into the R F P, that they would actually provide what, part of that growth is if you get certain certifications. My only drawback is, is if it's something that is needed to do your job, then it's a little bit harder for for me to be like, we're gonna give you, you know, ten dollars more an hour. Um, because it's hard. Chief LaSoy isn't gonna hire an officer who doesn't have their T-fold basic lease officer. That is what is required to do. Um, so that was a good conversation, um, with how did they do it? To ensure, one, that they're creating the growth for employees to move up, but also, two, it's not, I'm paying you more just to do what I asked you to do to get the job. So it's a, it's a hard balance, but they managed to do it.
Alright, before the city manager moves on, Martine?
Okay.
Chris? Okay, alright, continue.
Right, so on the updated departments and priority projects in this year's budget, there every department has kind of a list of projects that they want to complete within the year or work toward. And I wanted to give an update on all of them. Um, administration and important human resources, all four computers have been completed and purchased and installed and are being used. Continuing education and training, um, this is an ongoing item. This isn't a one-and-done. Um, Geo has completed his Texas City Secretary certification. He's the first one in Alpine. So I want to make sure that, you know, he's moving that direction. And the mayor and I had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Greer in regards to some training for leadership. So I selected a handful of directors and supervisors to complete a DIS training on one and one-on-one coaching to help them succeed and to move up in their positions and to understand how to manage employees. Um, that's one thing that we don't tend to always focus on. So hopefully that will be beneficial to them. And the ordinance books have been updated. The item is completed. I've hinted at the council about establishing core values for the city of Alpine. And today's toxic workforce training, they very, or they focused a lot on core values. The city of Alpine does not have core values. This is a slightly big task, and I would like council's blessing to move forward with it from the director and supervisor's position and let them provide and establish the core values for the city and have the council support it. I think if this is something we move forward worth, forward with to, um, one, entice people to apply, to show them this is what we're really after. I know Geo's big focus is customer service, um, and that can be a core value, and this is what we put not only on paper, but we start putting towards our employees to understand this is what our expectations are, and this is how we move forward. And it also goes back to how we recommend them. You have employees that have core values, um, that they truly believe in, that if the city had the same in place, we could align them together to encourage and promote them. Um, so that is on my list. I I I see Daryl over there, and he has department core values, so he's gonna be one of my go-tos. Um, the development structure of upward mobility of job description in the Conference of Active Employment Retirement Act, which would involve onboarding projects. The Alpine Police Department, community-oriented policing. If you have not seen them out in the neighborhood, please let me know, because they have participated in literally any event, five Ks, ten Ks, parades, festivals, Halloween, Christmas. Um, they do a little bit of everything. Um, Daryl has even provided, uh, training for our employees coming up for A E D and C P R. Um, so he's been very active, not only within the community, but also within his department and the city as a whole. Their training and travel, um, I could go on and on and on, and I would love to be a police officer with the amount of training that is being provided. Um, I'm only gonna bring the most current ones. Officer Wyatt Chopless and Anthony Vargas have now received their advanced peace officer certification. Officer Vargas has also received his intoxicilizer certification. And Officer Gattani continues to maintain her canine handler certification. So he's definitely put in a growth plan for his employees, and that's where I want us to have the financial to back it as well. Building services, although we have recently lost our building service official, um, he has initiated the employee training and certification, and before he left, he made sure that, um, Jessica was set up to move forward with some of the testing needed. Um, all of their computers have been purchased, and if you haven't heard on the radio, we have an ongoing P S A about smoke detectors to remind individuals to check their batteries and make sure that they're functioning, and if they don't have one, to get one installed. The finance department, um, we are currently pending the software. Um, I have been working not only with the individual I mentioned with the finance side, um, but looking at some of the big packages like Kyler Technologies. The training is ongoing. I have an, uh, one individual who will be going to Odessa this month for some grant online training that I'm kind of excited about. She, her name is in the system, but she's never actually had to use it. So we're gonna get her moving forward with that program, and of course, their computers have been purchased. Um, animal services, their training is ongoing. Um, Melanie Kate just recently got her basic animal control certification, which is wonderful. Their computers have been purchased and installed, and they're only pending the building maintenance of the dog runs. Um, they have to maintain a lower number of dogs within the run so that they have the availability to move them out, so someone can come in, spray paints, our wash, and do all those things. Public Works, the Parks Department, currently pending is the updating and replacing the fencing, painting of picnic tables and playground equipment, and replacing the updated, or and updating the park signs. Most of their, um, projects and activities will happen more in the the spring, summer months. Um, the signage is dependent on the approval of the ordinance so that we can get the signs based off of the ordinance to get them updated and put up. And they have ongoing training. Um, David Martinez just recently completed completed a storm water drainage. One of the requirements for the Publin Level Park is that we have to have a storm water permit. Storm water is the water that runs off of the property after a rainstorm. Um, and of course, we have to make sure we report that to T C Q and we follow all of those guidelines. I found an online course, um, Abel also took it, so I'm hoping it was slightly beneficial, um, so that they could understand why we do what we do. The street department has two main projects for this year. One is the creek maintenance, um, they have cleared the areas and prepared the rock baskets to assist with the corrosion of the banks. They're about ninety percent completed on that. And the one major one that you'll see them more in the summer months is the steel coating, which is pending. Um, I did submit the two twenty twenty-four list of streets to council, um, what he's looking at paving or steel coating, apologize. Um, for this year, he has provided me with the list of material that he will need to be able to do that. Um, and I know in discussions with the public and some of the residents have come to report council, we are looking at including more of the Alpine Country Club states so that we can get that moving forward as well. That was a project that had been on the books for the past two years, but unfortunately, last year, no one, you know, submitted a bid for that request for proposal. One item that is new is at the September twenty twenty-three workshop. Um, we all found out at the same time that our hot box was broken. Um, Eddie has finally secured the information needed to move forward with the procurement of a new hot patch machine. This one is slightly more advanced. Um, instead of having to manually move the material around to keep it, you know, melted, and it has an auger at the bottom that will continuously keep the material at the temperatures it needs to be. Um, it is slightly smaller than the current one, um, but they are excited. Um, that is coming with a price tag of eighty-nine thousand. Um, we did procure it through the Byboard, which is a purchasing co-op allowed by council. Um, so we're just pending the final process with that one. The utilities, um, I think everyone should give a huge round of applause for the first time in a very long time, even though we had an emergency and we had a water leak, um, on Friday that started at seven forty-five in the morning. It was really nice to see all of the different entities and departments working together to get that fixed. They dug approximately nine feet down um, in order to get to a one-inch pipe that had broke. One inch is what caused that damage. Um, people underestimate water pressure and how much water can go through a line. So when you have a water leak, even if you have a one-inch pipe, a lot can go through. Um, but it was just really nice to see them all working together. Um, they completed the project on Sunday. Um, Tech Thought did assistance with traffic control. But that being said, their projects are ongoing. Um, water leaks are ongoing, and they don't just stop. We wish they would. Um, so that is a project that is ongoing. The benefits of some of these leaks is it assisted us with our lead-in copper rule requirements. So when we open up the ground, we look down and we're like, oh, that's what pipe that is. Um, so that unfortunately is assisting us, but at the same time, it does set us back when it takes us almost twenty-four hours to fix a leak. The wastewater treatment plant, major project, was the clarifier one and reconstruction of six beds. We're currently working with the engineers as we were updated by Jacob and Martin Engineering Firm with an estimated March time to release the R F P and hopes to get someone interested in coming out and making those necessary repairs. They've completed the G I graphical information system. They do now have G I S capabilities. Um, it is new. They are learning. We are utilizing it primarily for the lead-in copper project so that they can map out and see everything that they have available. Um, Environmental Services has completed the used oil filters and freeze recycling program, batteries of paint disposal. Um, both of those, um, are projects that, um, Adalina wanted to get up off the ground, and she has. Electronic recycling is ongoing. She tries to host one or two a year so that she can get that trailer filled and then emptied out. Um, her community education and outreach is ongoing, and she's currently pending the legal dumping cameras. Um, she's working with the police department in order, in order to order the best cameras. The initial ones that she had looked at ordering, um, realized that the vendor could not provide everything in one shipment, and she'd have to go out to four other vendors to get every piece of it. And we didn't think that was the best, uh, process. The airport, um, currently is pending the climate control terminal and the installation of installation of electricity at the storage unit, and of course, their training is ongoing. Abel has been successful in trying to work with other airports. He and Riley will take a Saturday and go up to Monah Hands or one of the neighboring ones to kind of see how they do things. Um, so they get them hand on, get to visually see, go to, they're having an airshow. Um, he also completed the storm water as well. Currently, tourism is pending the update, uh, the continued updates of the building itself and the installation of the dark sky mural. The gas department is ongoing dump project, which is the distribution integrity maintenance plan, maintenance plan. Um, that one will go on until we have all of this still replaced with poly, and then they'll tell us we can't use poly, and we have to go on to something else. Um, they are very successful in completing their automated, I mean, their meter maintenance program. This is a year-to-year-to-year. They actually have the ability currently to maintain, and they do not keep older, um, meters, and they're constantly replacing them out, which will be very, very successful in the next project they're working on, which is the automated meter readers in the Fort Davis area. That is the current prior priorities as outlined in the budget. Currently, the open positions, as discussed a little bit earlier, was we have one in street department. We have three in the water department, including the director position, one in animal control, one in the police department, one in finance, which is what we switched to the manager position, and one in building services. After receiving the news that Mr. Devaney was stepping down, um, for family issues, I did contact and contract with Roy Mendoza at a Fort Stockton so that we can continue the inspections. And I have discussed with Jessica about moving after the I C C certifications for herself so that she can move up in the positions as well. Um, she is qualified. It's just a test that we need to get her to to get under her belt.
And this is the same guy we used before.
Yes. Any questions on all the priority projects? Those aren't just the priority.
They all what?
They all have their day-to-day stuff.
Right.
Those are just the big ones that we wanted to see focused on for this fiscal year's budget.
Good deal.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I just, I did have three quick questions. Sorry. I'll make them quick. You said some of the computers are purchased but not installed. Some are, um, some have been installed, some have not been installed, only purchased.
No, I apologize. They've all been purchased. They've all been installed. They're all being used.
Beautiful, okay. I was wondering who actually does that, if they do it, or Geo, or?
We swap a coin.
Next question I had was purchasing a hot box. Does that mean, are we gonna be utilizing a zipper? The zipper that we have at all, when, are we gonna be doing full-mill rebuilds at all? We're not doing that, right? Just hot. Steel coats, okay. So the zipper's just not gonna be used currently. Gotcha. And last one, got a March R F P for the wastewater. Uh, I was just gonna see if you would touch and let everyone know about the grant, the, uh, was it Texas Water Development Board? Um, so for the the grant that we see, we received from them, and they're gonna show us the strategic plan, how to maintain it, everything else like that. When does that grant, when will that start and end, and when will the large projects that kind of revolve around that start?
So the asset management program for small systems was awarded to the city. We have until February twenty fifth, or twenty-second, maybe the Friday, to submit our top three engineer choices. They provided a list of engineers that Texas Water Development Board has already vetted and approved. Um, one of the ones on there is Jacob and Martin, so we are listing them as our first priority because they are current engineers, so they already know the history of our plan altogether. Um, and they also know a lot of our infrastructure already. So the idea of the grant is to come in and actually provide an asset inventory and management program. So they would go in and evaluate pretty much everything that we have within our system. That's, it's not just what's in the ground, but that's also, you know, you have the two clarifiers, but all the extra stuff we've built up, that's just fitting. Um, we're hoping, because we're new to this, and we haven't been successful the past time, two times we've tried for this type of project. We're hoping that at the end of the project that we have a, these are your priority projects. You know, maybe the first priority is we need to replace the sewer. You know, maybe the first priority is we need to replace the sewer lines on the northeast part of town. Or maybe we need to focus just on the wastewater treatment plant. We're hoping that that helps us come up with those better projects. The Texas Water Water Development Board is also a financial institution. So they do provide loans and grants. Um a lot of their loan are low interest, um we currently have one where we pay no interest. Um so the other side to it is, is if we come up or the results come back with these priority projects and kind of how we could do them. Texas Water Water Development Board can also help us pro- provide the funding. So that's what we're hoping to get. Like I said, the city's tried for this in the past. And we were awarded the wastewater treatment sign, um so we're kind of excited that hopefully. Like I said, they'll come back and say, look, you're on the right track. This is what you have, this is your inventory, you need, in four years, you need to start replacing this, in five years, you need to start replacing this. And put more of a tiered, so that we don't get hit with six million all at once. Is that your question?
Councilmember Stevens.
That's nothing else.
Councilmember Samantha, Councilmember Ryder guess. Okay, continue please.
Okay, so the next item in the packet are November and December financial reports. I am not gonna go over the cover sheets and in the November report. Um technically, it's a point at this time, we are in December is the most recent. But I just wanted to hit some of the highlights, um you guys can visually see the actual numbers. Um so for December of twenty twenty three, that is the end of our first quarter, so roughly we should be at twenty five percent of the budget. I have several notes that I want to go over to kind of give you guys an understanding of why some of the numbers are slightly different. Um we're gonna start with the general fund. Um I would like to point out that our interest rates are exceeding our expectations. Whereas we should be about twenty five percent collections, we're a little, we're over fifty percent. Um we're closer to fifty seven and fifty nine percent as of the first quarter. So half our quarter through the year, we've already collected half of what we projected for interest and revenue. The property tax is primarily collected in December, January and February. So you see for the end of December, it's roughly at thirty three, I believe, percent. Um the main chunk of property tax comes in January, right before people start getting penalized in February. And so January's report will show a significant jump in the property taxes. Um but I just wanted to provide a little update and background, especially for the public. The property tax is a primary um source of revenue for the general fund. The sales tax is actually on target. Um remember, we do estimate what we think we will bring in. The end of December, we were at twenty five percent. All of the other revenue accounts are continuously monitored because they're not predictable in every case. When you look at building services revenue, you look at it and it's a little bit lower than what you would think it would be considering we're already through the first quarter. Most major home improvements and per- permits don't come until the spring and summer months. So you know, we're not nervous that something's going on. And the police department does not bring in money. It's just not what they do. Um our court is right on track, it has been a little bit slower. Remember, it's not that we haven't had court cases and we haven't had fines issued. It's dependent on when people actually paid them. So we do monitor that throughout the whole year to make sure we're we're on track with that. Um so the accounts are all monitored and I don't want you to think that, oh, we're a quarter through and they don't show twenty five percent. Um it is kind of a, you have to keep on top of them. On the expense side, this is the one that typically most people will focus on. Because everyone wants to know where's my money going? You know, I paid my my property taxes and I want to know what you did with it. Um I do want to note on the expense side for the general fund. The children's advocacy and the Alpine Emergency Service Boards were one time expensive, so they are at eight hundred percent. Though will not increase. You have a line item in there under the non-departmental called leased equipment. There are new governmental accounting standard practices that we are required to report all leased equipment. Which is what caught us in twenty two and will catch us in twenty three. In order to assist with the financial reporting, I broke it out as a separate line item. The reason this one is a non-departmental, this is our postage machine, these are our copiers. These are leased equipment that we are required now to report.
Which is the equipment, not not vehicle?
Those are another line. If I had the availability to spend all day and create a thousand line items, I would.
We know you would.
And so you'll see that when you look at the percentage, it's a negative because there's not an actual budget. We don't actually go in and start cleaning up the budget towards the end of the year. Um because you're gonna have that ups and downs with the line items. And if every time we have something, I'll be coming before council every meeting, well, I need to do this, I mean, so we try to wait to do it in bulk. If at any time the bottom line that comes out, that non-departmental total budget. If that's coming to the point where I feel we're gonna go over or under, that's when you start seeing the budget amendment come before. Building in standards. Um if anyone ever looks at our budget, which I hope everyone does, we have a line item for building in standards expenses. Most people are gonna ask, well, what are they spending money on? They are a board and they shouldn't be. Um they authorize the order to demolish properties. In twenty twenty three, they authorized or ordered the demolishment of a property on Avenue H. And fiscal year twenty twenty four, we were able to finally procure a contractor who would go in and demolish that property. Fifteen grand, one property. They cleaned it down to the ground and removed all of the debris. So a lot of people are very happy about this one, um but it is an expense and so now you see it recorded. The legal expenses, I want to bring this one up because it shows zero. And at this point, we should be at twenty five percent. Um so our legal expenses are approved by our current council and we've done this in every council prior. It is on tonight's agenda to approve the legal expenses. Um what are, some people might consider past due. Our legal expenses aren't past due and there are no penalties and interest being charged associated with those invoices. So the summaries that are provided within the packet, I just want everyone to understand, there are no penalties and interest associated with it. Those are the actual costs for each month. Yes, our months are gonna fluctuate every year. One month we may have more, um because we have more municipal court cases and we're prosecuting more. Other times, there may be an ongoing project where Gina and I just reach out more because we want to make sure we're doing something correctly. Or we want the legal advice. So I just wanted everyone to understand that that zero is because we're waiting to ki- uh pay those invoices. Spoken with the attorneys, they understand, we're, on my side, I feel comfortable to move forward, hoping council will appreciate this. On the admin side, I do want to point out that our I T services have exceeded budget. Council did approve Civic Cork, um which is a software which comes out of that line item. Once again, instead of coming to you to move a little bit of money out, um I like to wait till we've actually gone further through the year. But then if we need to move something, maybe it's not necessarily from salaries, it's another line item. Um I do want to point out that the street's contract labor um does show a negative seven thousand. We do not budget for contract labor. Because we always hope that within our own department, we have the ability to provide the services we need. Last year and part of this year, um we did bring in an outside individual to help us with the ability to run the machines. Um so that's where you see that expense. Um item nine zero zero one, which is the C I P for paving. Please remember that in January, council approved the budget amendment to reduce that to zero based on our property tax changes. And then of course, you'll see a new line item come in because I like to keep some of the bigger pieces of equipment separate for the new hot patch machine. So that that isn't a separate line item. Over the next three months, I do expect to see increases in expenses. If I don't, I get nervous because I don't like everyone spending money at the last minute. We operate in that mentality sometimes with, well, I'm gonna spend it right at the end, don't want to leave anything on the table. So over the next three months, we should see some significant increases. And especially as the department start working on those projects that they have within the budget. On the utility side, um the utilities is on track with the water sewer incentivization. Remember, the winter months, if you're gonna have lower revenue, the summer months for the water will be slightly higher. Um I am going to point out that I and uh Randy Guzman, the director of the gas department. Are monitoring the revenue for the gas department. Warmer winters do hurt the city. Um it it's hard because we've had several warm winters year after year. Randy does an excellent job with, if his revenue is at one point, he tries to keep his his expenses within the end, um within the same. Um so we are monitoring that one. The biggest revenue months are typically December, January, February. Um the prediction of a winter storm in January did not happen. Um we didn't have it. There's a prediction that we may have one or two this month, but with the beautiful weather today, I'm just not hopeful.
Um hopeful. Hopeful for a winter storm.
So we are keeping on track of that because we may need to look at how we, we look at the future of not only this department's budget. But also the current projects in place and how we want to fund them. Um expenses, I expect an increase in overtime for the water department for the lead in copper project. Um we do have a federal mandated deadline. So it is open to them to work extra, but when they're working extra for a water leak, kind of hurts us.
Um when is that deadline?
October sixteen.
Of twenty twenty four.
Yes.
And it's unfunded. Well, I don't know what's under my house.
We just want to know what's connected to our line.
I don't know what that.
Um so there, what they're doing is the meter readers, we have two designated employees. That are actually, when they're reading the meters, trying to scrape away to make sure they can see what's on your side. Um we will send out another round of letters asking for the public support in providing us the information if they know it. We are allowed to put within our report unknown. Um we just don't know what percentage of unknown that they're gonna accept and not come back and 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 come after it. And so we're still kind of learning the process, we've been going to webinars, um the team's been working pretty good at this one. Um T C Q permitting, I do want to point out that the permitting has increased for the wastewater treatment plant. And we are renewing, so we amended at the last fiscal year. And now we're renewing it for the, uh this fiscal year to move forward, um so that is slightly more. Um our landfill permits are also um have increased. Our landfill permit fees are dependent on how much we actually report to them for being disposed of. There was some calculation errors in last year's landfill reports that T D S has been assisting in getting them fixed. They provided me with the updated um information and I have submitted for amended report back to T C Q. Which will increase our actual permitting fees. Um. The gas department, you'll notice on the financial reserve line item, um that is our W T V settlement. That was the low order that we got argued down into half. Uh in three payments, so we made the second payment. For the airport, they are currently on track, Abel's got three percent more revenue than expenses. And we are waiting for the text that invoice for the city mount match for the layout plan. Um they've already moved forward with that process, um we did have a meeting today with um. Those who are interested in uh bidding on the project, so we're really excited, I'm really hopeful, get some good information. And the hot fund, which is Fund Six, is on track. Once again, you're gonna look at that revenue and be like, how do they bring in that much money when they've only brought in like thirty something thousand? Um remember, it is dependent on our seasons and our quarterly reports. So December, which would have had ended the quarter, all of those payments don't come in until January. So you'll see those high hits the month after the end of every quarter, when we get all the quarter reports from the the bigger hotels. And the last one is the debt service. Um we've brought in nothing but money so far, um this is part of the I N S, which is part of the property tax. Um just for clarification, when it comes to our debt service, it is divided. The general fund only pays for the general fund portion of debt service that's collected from the property taxes. March first is when our first payment for this fiscal year is due, which we will pay out in February. And I have to say, in in my tenure with the city, I just love to be able to tell you guys. We're once again making a final payment on another bond. So February's payment will be the final bond payment for the twenty eleven refunding bond. This bond was three point seven million dollars. Um we have come, we will have completed it this year, which brings us down to roughly two point six million in debt. And just for the public's full understanding, out of that, we're only collecting interest and sinking from property taxes. For five hundred and three thousand of it. The remaining portion is actually coming from the water um utility side. Which is, those are revenue bonds, so what we bring in for revenue for the water department has to pay that portion that they owe. This is where it's important, we'll have a follow up on the rate study to really understand, are we bringing in enough money to pay our debt for the water side? The water side has roughly two point one million. American Electric, A E P, uh franchise agreement.
You might want to check your summer report for the airport, it shows Abel lost a hundred and fifty thousand like this last month. It's on your side, Bishop.
Oh, my bad. I will not work late either. I will, I will, yeah, I'll need to update that for the cover page. Yeah, I probably typed too fast. Oh yes, definitely, definitely, definitely. Sorry, Abel. Um I'll update that before it goes on to the website. The American Electric, the last time we met and discussed this, I know that this was. Where are we at? This has been an ongoing thing. I've been working with other cities to see what they've done. I find it very interesting. Marpa did not sign the agreement. Marpa City Council refused to sign the agreement because they did not want the city of Marpa on their bills. So it will specifically just state state public utility commission standard percentage fee. So they went with what the state's already requiring A E P to provide for right away services or access. Um because they didn't want the city to be responsible and people were like, oh, well, the city's charging this. Um so I found that interesting. The city of Buddha recently increased theirs to four and a half percent. And increased their residents' average bill by about four dollars and fifty cents. Um Bay City um recently signed theirs at a fifteen year. And they went with the same rate that they were currently under of point zero zero two seven eight six. See, Abilene signed a twenty five year at a point zero zero one 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 six. I've gotten finally copies of their agreements. Um so that I could compare to see if there was that extra, like the utility pole replacements and things like that. I have not found a contract with that. Um so at the next meeting, I am gonna probably make a recommendation to council to stick with the current state allowed two percent. There is not significant in um. Impact, yes, it would bring in more money. But I know at the same time, council's been kind of, let's be careful where we're trying to get more money from. Um I think A E P has an agreement with us currently in place to assist us with the maintenance of our lights. Um which is separate from this. I still want to do a little bit more, you know, midnight reading on this to make sure, um I have San Marcus and. I think it was New Brunfolds also. Every city is slightly different. I haven't been able to find more within our area. Um the counties don't have the same type of agreement.
And how long are you suggesting we sign for?
Oh, I don't think it should be more than the five or ten years. I think we should have the ability to keep going in and updating it.
What was our last one? How many, how long?
Fifty.
Fifty?
So that, that was the standard back then, because every single one of these cities. Outlined to the public that the prior agreements were forty and fifty years. So this is a fee that gets passed on to the rest. For A E P's use of our our writings, for all the utility of this. So I am gonna look further into it, but I just wanted you to know that I have been working on it and looking out to other cities. Um and trying to get as much information as possible. Um the last item is really just a a an information on on the budget. So I've already spoken with directors and had the initial uh internal conversation about the budget. Um I've already started working on an actual budget format. Every year, I kind of change it up, um I'm hoping that each year it's making it better. Um providing more information, more clarity, um more transparency. Um of course, there is national recognition that hopefully one day the city of Alpine will get. One of the things that I'm requesting is when we look at the budget calendar, that the workshops not be held sporadically throughout a month. That they be held back to back June fourth, fifth, and sixth. The reason why I'm asking council to consider this is that spreading them out is not productive.
I'll vote for that.
You're not even, you're not going to be here.
Um, and I I want to further explain. That as we gather the information from not just the public, but from the council as well. It is really hard to come up with a completed budget. When each piece of it is a different week or within a different month. Yes, we want the public to be um participating and we want their input. But I honestly feel that those who are truly interested in looking at the city's budget and moving forward with a plan. Will be willing to spend the fourth, fifth, and sixth at the city. Um, and they don't have to come all three days. Um, they can choose which days to come. But this also means that city council will have to do more work prior to these budget meetings. Um, this means that we will, we, I will provide council with a. A a budget questionnaire that will be slightly more in depth. Um, and asking more questions. I'm hoping that the departments are willing to work to putting core values in place. So that we can initiate them in the fiscal year twenty five budget. Um, so that when you look at our priority projects, that they're tied back to those core values. I understand that scheduling is a conflict. We know that with just the recent trying to schedule a meeting.
When you're trying to schedule it soon, but this is months in advance, so everybody's calendar is probably clear.
So I I would like to be able to schedule so that everyone is fully aware ahead of time. That on June fourth, fifth, and sixth, that we will be having budget worktops.
Are we going to vary the times?
We can.
Cause some people work till five or five thirty or.
Um, it also allows for more time to prepare, discuss, and make changes. It's hard when we try to do it in the different sections to get back, to make the changes, and then. Get to another meeting to have it presented. I'd like to have the budget prepared and put together. Um, no later than July first, so that we have the month of July to actually discuss it. These are really high expectations that I'm setting for myself. Because I really want the city to be able to truly discuss the budget in the direction we want to move forward. At some point, the council will have to look at that. We can't leave it off the table when we have big projects that the community wants us to complete. So I have tentatively set those dates. Um. The idea is also that we will continue with the same tax rate. Because we will not know what the appraised values will be until July twenty sixth. But if we can plan and budget within what we have, that extra goes towards those projects. That we are tentatively trying to move back or push off. Um, just gonna give you an update, this isn't gonna start in May, it's already started. So you'll get a tentative budget calendar. Um, there are a lot of state laws that. Go around our budget of when we can and can't do things, when we have to advertise, how big the font is we have to use to advertise. So I want to make sure we're ahead of the game.
Good deal. Okay, Council Stevens?
So fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Of June.
And we'll have time soon.
So the fourth is the city council meeting, start the zoom.
That would be probably right before the council meeting as a kickoff to getting the budget started.
Very good. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Sodate, Councilmember Nance?
And what they, um, I guess I was just gonna tie this back in to um. When new council people could be coming on board, because there's a lot of seats up and everything else, the budget starts before that. You're saying, when when did you say that you're kind of working on all this? Was it March?
So, no, 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 so. Of June.
The workshops.
So before June, for those workshops, council, so just like we did for this last. Group of new employee or new city council members coming in, we provided those questions right off the bat. So it'd be the same thing. I believe they get sworn in on the sixteen. Um, so the fifteenth, they're gonna get that first email that says, not only welcome to city council, but here's some homework.
Hey, question? Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Stone?
I have sit through all these budgets that. There's got to be a way to have get more participation. I know you've tried on everything in the world. I've watched you try everything in the world. But you know, you're working around three people that will come to these meetings, so you need to make these people happy. And if the citizens don't want to come, then then don't worry about them.
I agree a hundred percent, and I also. Members, you know what your constituents want, and they're gonna reach out to you before they reach out to a meeting. Um, yes, we always want to have the door open to allow them to participate. Even though the workshops are are being held back to back, we still have to have public hearings for the budget. So there's still further discussion.
Like, they still have time.
But instead of trying to rush it and then go back and update that little section, and then go back and update another little section. I'd rather have the sit down conversation where these are the big items, this is what we're discussion is, and this is what we're focusing on. I don't know, and council can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, most people don't care about the day to day operations. They want to know, you said you were gonna pay the hundred blocks and you paid two. They, I I mean, everyone understands, we've got to pay our. We've, you know, got to have some office supplies, which that's one thing that I didn't bring up, and I'm sorry, Judy. Our office supplies, we buy in bulk and we do it all upfront sometimes. Numbers, it's like, well, it's because we did all in bulk. Um, and and most people may not care that, you know, we bought ten thousand blue envelopes October first. I pay attention to that because that is what you hired me for.
Right.
Um, but this year I'd like to start taking that direction to a a higher level. Um, with the budget in particular, and you let us in the departments worry about the daily.
Right, anything else? Okay, that was a long report, but it was very informative. We needed it. All right, there are no city staff updates. We're moving into public hearings. I want to remind everybody that council cannot comment or respond. During a public hearing either. Public hearings are going to start at six twenty seven PM, City Secretary. Public hearing item number one, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty four dash oh one dash oh one. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at four oh one North Ninth Street. The property owner of record. Is Jeffrey Spears. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine seven three. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Okay. Seeing none. Seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number two. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit. Twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh one, a short term rental special use permit. Allowing a short terminal to be established at six one two East Avenue E. The property owner of record is Dana Andrade. The parcel ID of the subject property is one zero six eight seven. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to close public hearings at. Let me just put my watch away. What time is it, City Cemetery?
Six twenty.
Six twenty eight PM. Okay, and before moving into the consent agenda, we're at one hour. We're going to take a short five minute break. Okay, calling the meeting back to order. Consent agenda, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains five items. Item one, approval of January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of special use permanent twenty twenty four dash oh one dash oh one, a short term rental special use permit. Allowing a short term rental to be established at four oh one North Ninth Street. The property owner of record is Jeffrey Spears. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine seven three. Item three is approval of special use permit twenty twenty four dot zero two dash zero one. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at six twelve East Avenue E. The property owner of record is Dana Andrade. The parcel ID of the subject property is one zero six eight seven. Item four is approved resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two dash zero six, a resolution authorizing the city's police department. To participate in the offer of the governor's public safety office homeland security grants division operate uh operation Lone Star. For fiscal year twenty twenty four. And item five is approval or approved payment of the monthly billing summary statements for Bohorke's law firm services for the months of August twenty twenty three. September twenty twenty three, October twenty twenty three, November twenty twenty three, and December twenty twenty three.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, council approves the consent agenda unanimously. Okay, moving on to information or discussion items. Item number one belongs to the city manager.
Discuss the Alpine Police Department twenty twenty three racial profiling report, and we do have Chief LaSoya uh present tonight to be able to speak on that.
Okay, Chief LaSoya?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see y'all. So uh. Annual report, uh, nothing out of the ordinary with the report. Uh, we had no racial pro uh pre profiling complaints this. Uh, last reporting period. Um, and everything was submitted to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement as required.
Councilmember Stevens?
I just make an observation based upon the data, us guys are the worst drivers.
I could have told you that.
We didn't name that report.
Just tell them the number of traffic stops, men eight hundred and twenty four, women four hundred and twenty. There's a message there.
That's why there wasn't any complaint.
Yeah.
You know, I think probably what it is is uh, women are more conscientious, they're uh. Safer. Men already have the, I I know where I need to get to. We land there.
Wait, one minute. Uh, Councilmember Sodate? Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Stokes?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dara. All right, information and discussion item number two belongs to Councilmember Stokes.
Uh, I went to the commission and court meeting on the twenty second. I wasn't present at the ninth. I'm still, I had like some kind of relapse of. Or in my mind, I did a poke in my life. I laid round, took a nap. I didn't get up and go. Um, I didn't see a whole lot um. Happen, Ryan presented his racial profile filing. Their uh, their auction and piece of the furniture and stuff online, instead of just selling it. So I thought that was a good idea. Um. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. They've hired um. They have hired their um. Their ex auditor to do their. Catch up on their audits. They're trying to complete twenty twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. So. We're way ahead of the game.
Yes.
Way ahead.
And Judy, we would auction off furniture, but we pass it around from department to department.
Until it falls apart. Reduct tape and everything.
Donated to the bonfire for the school.
That is a good idea. It was a neat thing.
Okay, good. All right, good. And thank you for providing the the typed up.
Well, it takes me ten times, because then I see I put the wrong date or I misspelled some. So gee, I got about fifteen of them, and I go, I think that's it.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so that concludes information and discussion items. Let's move on to action items. The first one belongs to the city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh one. An ordinance repealing chapter ninety taxation article five short term rental to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Establishing article five for terminal to chapter twenty two business to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending the parking requirements for short term rentals within the city. Providing the establishment of up to a two thousand dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this ordinance.
Okay, I need a motion.
More commotion.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so now discussion, we do have um city manager zoning and planning here to discuss this. And also Chris Rugia, uh, Councilmember Nance wanted to bring up also to discuss this.
Yes, I will let Matt Walter, the Chair of Planning and Zoning, start the discussion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. P and Z approved this with changes recommended, basically verbiage changes. Um, and then felt that the. Parking requirements were confusing, complicated, difficult uh for the owner to. Put up with and impossible to be enforced. So those were the things that we that we discussed. It got the uh. Alpine parking itself became a discussion, but that's not on the agenda, but that is something that might have to be addressed in the future. Yes, in that one, we felt that uh we recommended almost going back to ground zero, one parking per uh uh per not rental bed bedroom, but per rental unit and go from there. And and uh but we agreed with that, all the other stuff.
What you say with rental unit, does that mean whether it's a one bedroom?
One bedroom or forty bedroom. So we're to be, I guess we'll be all.
What do you suggest we do with the other people that are there in the vehicle?
And uh well, that's what we're gonna leave that up to you. We didn't. That's what we're, what we recommended is just one parking spot marked identified. Uh and any other parking that, let's say they're a three bedroom rental unit, short term rental uh rental unit that they would have to make arrangements for parking. It wouldn't be uh, wouldn't be something that would be up to the P and Z.
I see on our form that you recommend we approve this ordinance. P and Z gave the recommendation.
P and Z did recommended approval, yes.
Okay. The two thousand dollar fine, is that what we had previously, or is that a new number? That's what I thought, okay. Any other questions for?
Yes, so so I do. So uh I tell you, I've got already big pushback about parking. People understand the uh additional per five hundred square feet of common area. But this is completely unenforceable as written. Because if there is only one parking space and it's a three bedroom unit, then the next line down, it says the motor vehicles of all occupants of the short term rental shall be parked only on the permitted and approved driveway in the short term rental. We have no enforcement mechanism for that, which says this is unachievable.
And that's that's the same way we felt too, that you gotta go back to ground zero.
Well, but going, this doesn't go back to ground zero. I I can't in good conscious mode to approve this because this doesn't work. It makes, it takes we used to have one per sleeping unit plus the five hundred square feet. All the residents I've talked to said, hey, I can go to one parking space per sleeping unit. So if that says you have a three bedroom, you have to have three bedrooms on the lot. But this says you only have to have one on the lot. And then when it says, but you all have to park on the lot, this ordinance doesn't work.
Exactly.
So I I don't see how we council can even consider going forward with this. Because we've got we think we've had problems with short term rentals before this one will just, you know, put us up in the mouth where we can't do anything. And if I'm, let's assume I'm now a short term rental owner. I go to the judge because I get cited for I have a three bedroom place. And but I met the requirement that we council would approve through a consent agenda. I now go for the judge and says, well, Judge, I complied with the requirements. I had one. Uh I can't control, and I do have a three bed unit. And I just, I I only rented out one, but three people showed up. I I don't know how the judge and we can withstand that. So I in my war, this is an issue and I I can't support it.
Councilmember Sandox?
I agree.
Councilmember Nance?
I actually like the way that this, I I mean, the language could be cleaned up, and ordinance is going to require two readings. And if I'm not wrong, then if there's no drastic changes, then we could approve it on the next reading. But um I actually, I went to that P and Z meeting and I feel like the current one that we have is one per bedroom and one per five hundred square feet. And we're already having the issue with uh is this a bedroom or is this a office? And that to me is kind of uh spongy where we actually decide well, if you have a closet in your room, is that a bedroom? Or how do we define what an office is? How do we, we let the the person with the S T R permit define what a bedroom or an office is? Um and this one actually matches, talking to Devaney. I was gonna say uh matches what fitness are required. I think if you own a home in Alpine, you're only required, correct me if I'm wrong, to have one parking spot? So we would be matching that. And on these larger properties, I think if you, just the market fixes a lot of this, if you have a three bedroom, two bath home, very rarely, or if you build a five bedroom home, very rarely do you not add any parking at all because it's just not marketable. You know, if you were in the city or something, then you may have a parking garage or elsewise. But I would almost guarantee you any new home built here, if it's three two, it's gonna at least be able to have two cars, maybe three, if it's got a garage or anything else. But the market is solving a lot of those problems. Um and also speaking to Darryl too on how often they've had, and Darryl can probably speak to this, how often people do complain or that they receive complaints about from the parking requirement side of S T Rs, where they can't maybe get to their properties though, because I've got an S G R and they brought twenty cars over here or anything else. I think we're kind of a uh a solution looking for a problem on some of this stuff. The um else was I gonna say on that, just and I do feel, one last thing I was gonna say on it is, I feel like this was put into place as to to um basically constrict or to to constrict the supply of uh S T Rs, you know, so we can, because you can't have a billion of them out there. I totally understand that. It affects the quality of life of the end user. But I think the city has other mechanisms that they could actually use to uh, I don't think parking is a way to to um, you know, figure out how this works. An option would be short term rental permits. Um so we charge, and this is kind of going down another rabbit hole, but looking at Marfa's, their short term rental permits are six hundred dollars per year plus a hundred per unit. So for the very first year, you're looking at seven hundred dollars to start a S T R in Marfa. Here it's three seventy five. In the very next year in Marfa, once again, six hundred plus a hundred per rental unit. So another, or five hundred plus another rental unit, so six hundred, and now it's one hundred. So we have a very low barrier to entry in the S T R market from the permitting side, but a high, more onerous one from the parking department side. Now I would like to switch those around where we're actually receiving revenue to uh to manage those.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I kind of disagree that that council is using this as a way to discourage S T Rs. As far as making money, I don't think Alpine is is trying to make money off the S T Rs also. Uh I think maybe changing the wording to where the five hundred square feet is not, is just livable space. It doesn't matter whether it's an office, whether it's a bedroom. As far as you say, just leaving it to them as to where they're gonna park, we're already having issues with them parking in the neighbors' yards and the of the street. I don't think we need to do it. It's a little bit contradictory, which you all have said, that we need to go to to back to zero. But yet you're asking us to approve this. Uh I I I myself can't see doing that either. I think that there has to be some kind of a way for us to be able to look out, not only for the for the people in the S T R, but also for the neighbors and people that are that are that are in the surrounding area.
Councilmember Stokes?
We all know how I feel about a S T R. I don't want to buy many, I don't want eighteen cars there. But you know, if somebody shows up with two cars, somebody's coming in from one way and somebody's coming in from another, where do they put that extra car? If we're just giving them one spot and don't worry, to my yard, give them your address. I mean, talk about my address. Because people use this as a meeting place. And I know what Rick's referring to because he's got places up there. People are in alleys and, I mean, they're just, they're 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 making a huge mess. Because those are single rooms. So you rent eight single rooms, you've got eight cars plus what you own, that's another two or three. You know, you're up to eleven vehicles at somebody's house, and that's too many. And so I don't know. I don't know if I like either of them.
All right. Are y'all done with Mr. Walter? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and Councilmember Nance had asked Chris Rugia to come up.
And then I would also like to for Mr. LaSoya to come up.
Okay. Mr. LaSoya, yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, one one thought that occurs to me that may or may not be a productive one, but in terms of determining what's a bedroom, one source might be the listing on Airbnb, listing on the website. What are they advertising? Because if they're advertising for uh promising a certain number of beds, that might be an anchor that I don't, I don't know, though. I'm not an ordinance writer. Uh that just crossed my mind. Uh but uh
They ideally shouldn't be listing the property until legal.
True. Well.
Yeah, we seem to have that problem around here too.
Hmm. So then, yeah, policing their their listing post parking, I don't know. But uh but yeah, speaking to uh Councilmember Nance's comment about the uh the fee structure, I wanted to let you all know the results of some recent uh statistics that we've been running. I'm I'm working with Megan towards a an ongoing tourism economy index. Uh and the numbers I'm I just was looking at was from Air DNA, which is specifically for short term rentals, and it was comparing the number of nights booked per month versus the number of nights that were available per month. So it was the demand against the supply. And what we're seeing over the last three years is a steady upward trend that more people were coming to town over time. So the the demand was growing, but what we also saw was that the available room nights was growing much faster. And so that tracks with what I'm hearing from our short term rental operators, which was pretty negative in terms of the market. They're feeling like they're not seeing the business that they were before. But then what the numbers are saying is that doesn't mean less people are coming. It means they have more competition. It means there's more short term rentals than we have people coming. That's something that, whether that's the the operators in business are gonna be happier once that's in balance, but the ones who go out of business on the way there are not gonna be the ones that are happy, obviously. Uh I don't know uh what mechanisms are gonna make those things come into balance. It will definitely happen sooner or later. Uh a fee structure might be something that does, but I it's gonna not gonna be popular within a business that's that's being stretched right now because we've got this oversupply. So so yeah, it's gonna hit the the profit margins of businesses that are already having a bit of trouble. So I just wanted to let you guys know that's the picture we're looking at right now is an oversupply, but an increasing demand. So that that makes me happy, but not those individual short term rentals.
Right.
I was gonna say, um concerning that real quick, the we just looked at the budget and um in December, I think we brought in three thousand dollars in S T R permits. And you can look at the previous one, I was looking at that, we brought in about twenty twenty one, six thousand dollars in S T R permit fees and twenty twenty three, nine thousand six hundred ish. So it is, the permit fees are going up, and that's charging a hundred dollars for a renewal. You know, at three fifty, and the two we did tonight are both first timers. So those, that's the seven hundred that comes into uh from that. But when you were talking about Air DNA as far as compliance, and then also what has it been, having a human come back in and look and say, well, there's eight beds here, that's two bedrooms or anything else. I would really be interested from the city side in who does that compliance and what that cost actually looks to us. Because I would almost say, you see, it probably costs the city more than a hundred dollars over a year to ensure compliance of a renewal S T R. And when we, just throwing numbers, I'm not saying to go to high heaven and and do what Marfa is doing as far as five hundred on a on a renewal, but just to run numbers out here, so people know all this information. We have about seventy five S T Rs in the city. If we went from one hundred dollars renewal fee, that's seven thousand five hundred. If you went to five hundred dollar renewal fee for all these, you're all of a sudden bringing in an extra thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars might go towards compliance with the city or whatever else. I think the city really needs to identify what the actual compliance costs are for the city to make sure that S T Rs are in compliance. Um so I guess, real quick, and you may have this information or Megan, do we know what, do we pay for Air DNA?
And we do, we partner with that uh with Marfa. So we pay basically fifty percent of that contract. Now, compliance is a piece of why, uh like for my purposes, it's it's tracking the performance, you know, so that we know what's what's the health of our tourism economy. It's a it's a hard number. And so compliance is, I would say, you know, a quarter of the purpose for that cost, yeah.
I would be interested to know what that cost was, and then any other cost that we actually have. And then the last thing I was gonna say on this was the um in the permitting fee, what was I thinking? I just lost my train of thought. I'll come back to it.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Rodriguez?
On the permitting fee, could that be uh, we we went and looked for all these S T Rs. We brought, I mean, we actively looked and had them come in and gave them time to come in. So that may be what the increase was. It's just that before they were not be, they were not registering, they were not paying the fee, and we actively went out and made them come in. So that could justify why the numbers were so high those years.
But it's also gonna be an ongoing expense to make sure people are coming in and paying.
A hundred dollars, I highly doubt even covers the cost of inspection, barely, probably. Uh in which that's basically, I think, the the most part of our renewal. But I mean, if you could take into consideration audits and staff time, like it takes a lot of time to find noncompliant operators. And if the council does want us to focus on citing them, even though they're already in the permitting process and things like finding new ones, it takes a lot of time. So the additional revenue could either pay for software that could help us do the compliance. Uh I wasn't aware that we paid for Air DNA. I I think I kind of remember once y'all mentioned it, but um there are softwares out there that automate everything. And I got quoted in one. Uh I think Chris might have attended that demo with me for about thirty thousand dollars. I mean, but it it would do everything, you know what I'm saying? And even if it wasn't the software, it might be some extra staff to be able to do those priorities that the council wants for us, because it does take a lot.
And I guess what we need to remember is that it is a business. And I understand that, you know, like you say, you know, it's a business that's already barely getting by. Well, that happens to a lot of businesses. And and we have to remember that that's what these are.
Councilmember Stevens?
I I think from a value standpoint, in in my view, I I've got, I think, two important things from my perspective representing the board five. One is property owners ought to be able to do with their property what they want. Okay, no different than if you own an Airbnb or uh a resident, you want to make an Airbnb or if you're living, you know, next door. The key to me is, we don't want one impact in the other. So to me, that's and and that's why I raised the parking issue. Because when one resident brings in, you know, five or six cars and impacts parking, and that it would, that is unfair to the resident. So that's why, to me, understanding this parking approach is important. That's one element. Second element, my view is the free market is gonna determine whether it's viable to maintain an Airbnb or not. And I'm not interested in raising fees as a way for the city to collect more money. Because quite frankly, when visitors come in, they pay sales tax. Uh we get the property tax for a non homestead facility for someone doing that. We get benefit for that. And and I would think that part of our compliance activity, I know that, you know, it's Jessica and the and the team who were building standards. That's part of what they do and that gets paid for. So I think there's this balance in between. We do struggle with uh individuals reporting a lack of compliance because, quite frankly, we've not required compliance. And so in my view, that's why people are pretty frustrated with this. They don't report hey, uh ten people showed up and they parked on lawns or they filled up in areas because we haven't been doing our yeah, we haven't done anything. So that's why, to me, there needs to be equity. Uh let the market decide whether a short term rental wants to be in business or not, based upon its economically viable to them or not. Uh and therefore, if we modify fees, it ought to be just enough to cover the cost of maintaining compliance. So that's where I come down on those three elements from a principle standpoint. That's my view.
Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Couple more things, just real quick. I agree with Mr. Stevens saying we wouldn't use permit fees as a profit center, you know, just to do it. It should, it meet compliance, whatever compliance costs are. Once we figure out what compliance costs are, then we would be able to better judge that. And then kind of speaking to what you had said, where there is growth in the uh demand for tourism and S T R market, but there's more growth in how many, the availability of it, supply and demand on that. Then I think, and somebody had mentioned this to me, where the um, we currently have a yearly fee. And we, you know, we have a a first year fee and then a renewal. Possibility could be a two year fee, so that at a hundred dollars, uh well, say three fifty to get in, a lot more people are open to actually trying this out, which is probably why we're having more people to submit for the permit. If it was a two year fee and let's just say four hundred a pop, so eight hundred dollars, but that covers you for two years, a lot more people would be reticent to say I want to try S T R eight hundred dollars fee, but it's gonna cover me for two years. But that's changing the barrier to entry into the market, which would curtail some of the supply when in there, which comes back to quality of life too, on having a whole bunch of them. When I was actually looking, or when I started thinking in my head about the um supply and demand of the uh Airbnbs, I was just gonna mention real quick, saturation point, because we we're hearing from uh S T Rs that we're reaching saturation. Saturation to them means it may not be profitable. And the other side of that is the saturation point, quality of life for the local people. I was thinking, if if half the houses or housing stock in Alpine were S T Rs and we needed more And we needed more because we were Aspen or whoever else, then the businesses would still be happy. So we wouldn't have hit their saturation point. But quality of life of people would have been very, very low if half your housing stock was STRs. I think it's just viewing it from the business side and the quality of life of the citizens.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Should we decide? Nothing?
Well. I think you've all agreed that it needs to be revisited.
Yep.
But I also do wanna point out, you brought up additional items.
A lot.
But I do want to point out that bedroom is defined as a living area of the dwelling unit that is designated and furnished for sleeping. And which has proper egress as required by the International Revenue Code. Do you guys already define one thing? Within this, this current ordinance. I think at this point, and you can. Chime in as well, that there's probably more additional work that needs to be done. I agree. So I don't know, the the item needs to be tabled?
Um, postpone.
Tabled brings it back next time. Right?
Right.
So if we disapprove it, it goes back to P and Z anyway.
You can refer it to.
So if they voted against it, we go back to P and Z.
You could amend the motion to.
Really depends on what y'all wanted to. You wanna send it back to them and ask them to focus on specific areas. You know, keep in mind, you know, we had, this was reviewed by P and Z, November twenty-seventh, that was reviewed by you all on December fifth. It went for official action on January twenty-second. They made the recommendation, here we are. So. You know, just to put some kind of context there, I think we really wanna be specific with what kind of, what you want them to look at. In your.
I agree, cause it seems that P and Z and what we're thinking, we're just kind of.
I think planning and zoning wants to move forward because we have kind of a. Non-compliance for some and compliance for other, based on specifically right now, parking. But you guys have all addressed additional concerns and issues that may need to be visited as well. Even just now, looking at it, based on the actions of the next agenda item, there may be additional changes within the zoning itself. That needs to be updated in the STR. I think, right now, your concerns are parking. Your concerns are definition of what a unit or bedroom is. Your concerns are permitting costs. Your, your, your concerns are enforcement. And making sure that the STR is achievable. And that it's, it's not unachievable. So these are all items that can be addressed by planning and zoning at your next meeting.
I was gonna see if we could get Mr. LaSoya up just to ask and get data on. On the parking requirements in STRs. And it could be like Mr. Stevens said, they haven't been cited in the past, so they don't, you know, bring them to attention. But I guess I was gonna ask, say, how often is it?
And so, and I confirmed with my dispatch, we haven't received any complaints. As far as any type of parking. Concerns with any of the STRs. So. And I know. Like Mr. Mr. Stevens and I have talked before, the residents will call him and then expect him. And 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 they have to, they're the relay for us. But, yeah, we always, we always try to get our our community to call us. But it just, sometimes it just doesn't happen.
And I think Greg's point was, if if nothing's gonna happen, why would people call you?
Right.
And then I think that comes from the fact too, that we've, we have stressed so long to them that STRs are here, whether we like it or not. So they feel like maybe, you know, just talking to us is what's gonna do it, because until something has changed in this area.
And I think for the majority of it, just because I'm aware of so many, we, I would say, we don't. Have any type of issues. There's, there's only a few that we actually have issues with. The one over on Cockrell and Day. Being probably the 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 most major one that we have. So. It's. I think it's a. It's a good way to make business, just as long as you follow the rules, but. There's gonna be those, those ones that just. Will skirt around it or completely ignore it.
I wanna see something, though, that is going to encompass everything that that could come up. I hate that we come up and we do an ordinance because this came up here, and we do an ordinance because this came up, or the parking came up, or this came up. I want something, I want us to look at it as a whole. It may not be big of an issue on this side of town as it is on on Ward Five for Rick. But I want us to look ahead, and I want us to to look at the big picture. And and do something that's going to include any problems that we can foresee happening, instead of just waiting for each individual thing to happen.
Councilmember Stevens?
I don't think P and Z can solve the problem. Because we've just talked about hotels. We've just talked about policing, we've just talked about planning and zoning. There are a number of entities in the city that it's gonna take to kind of wrap this thing together in an integrated way that makes sense. And so while Matt and team have tried really hard, and have the meetings, we're just not gonna get there, the way we're currently going, so.
And I don't, I don't think there's any, cause if you look in the news, there's cities across the country that are having these problems. And I don't think it's gonna be, it's almost impossible to foresee something that's gonna happen later on. It just. I mean, you know, as y'all were talking, I was thinking, man, that'd be perfect place for human trafficking. And so that's my, my thing of it, and so. Yeah.
Don't need a workshop, a subcommittee, a group, or whatever. I I'm happy to help on it. I'm sure Darren here would be too. We can work with. A committee, Megan, if we wanna do a workshop, pull it together and and slug our way through. But we gotta have all the voices there in terms of what makes sense.
And I would just add on to that, I agree with Mr. Stevens on that, and I think it would be really important to get STRs on to get their feedback.
Get them here at the workshop.
So they have a seat at the table.
Yep.
Okay. So are we going to postpone this then? What, what does council want to do?
So, and I guess I would amend the motion then that we postpone action on this. To a future date and ask the city manager to help convene a special committee. To consider all of the implications of the STR ordinance.
Instead of a workshop, a committee?
Workshop committee.
What do you think's the best route, Megan?
I'd like to initiate with a workshop first, to see what players are interested in participating.
Okay. Okay.
It's not like we have lots of things we're not working on, but this is important.
Okay, will you make that amendment again? So you move to amend?
I moved to amend that we have a workshop that pulls together representatives from council and the appropriate. Boards and commissions and the appropriate departments in the city. And include those who, from STRs. So we can begin to have a more cohesive approach to short-term routes.
Okay, so starting with the amendment, I need a second. Okay, and all in favor of the amendment? To pull together a workshop, bringing together council boards, departments, STRs. And any other stakeholders, please raise your right hand if you would like to approve that amendment. City secretary, all are in favor of that. Now we need to dispose of the original motion as amended now. So all in favor, please raise your right hand. And the original motion has been approved as amended. Good deal. All right, moving on to action item number two. This belongs to city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero two. An ordinance amending Appendix C, zoning Article One, Basic Ordinance of the Alpine Court of Ordinances. Amending the city zoning ordinance to provide for regulations in the M one industrial district zone. Providing establishment of up to a five hundred dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of this ordinance.
I need a motion.
So move.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and city manager, as far as discussion, we still have planning and zoning. The chair plus two, two board members. Are accompanying him back there.
Guards.
Okay. I don't want to not recognize.
Thanks, ma'am.
No, we wanted to put something nice on your plate for you.
Okay, so go ahead and tell us what the thinking was of planning and zoning about why you think we should approve this.
The M ones. We thought, we didn't have any problems with it, basically, thought it was well-written. It looked okay, and didn't recommend any, any major changes, maybe some verbiage, but. We thought the, the city had given us something pretty easy to work with.
Can you give us an outline, though, as for the audits, as to what?
Well, these are the, these are the, was it fifty yard, fifty feet from the railroad tracks? That area where the, where where that special zone is. Where we can, you know, regulate businesses and in this case. What's the M stand for again?
This is the industrial.
Industrial, yeah.
We currently don't have anything in place, right?
Do have an industrial M one policy or ordinance in place. It currently allows for anything and everything to be established within this zone. After review. Abby Branch actually had proposed a draft back to planning and zoning, and you and myself. To actually put in a little bit stricter regulations. Currently, the M one allowed for any type of residential, any type of multifamily residential, any type of mobile home. Any type of business, whether it be a lithium battery plant. Whether it be a dog grooming business, it was very open-ended. After a lot of concerns that were brought before, by Menzoni, Menz Branch. Prepared a draft to actually outline specifically what would be allowed within this zone. It is strictly along the railroad section of Alpine, with a. Spot here and there.
Of course.
So this would, of course, just puts a little bit more regulation so that you don't have certain businesses coming in, in areas that they would not be.
So would a lithium ion battery be allowed under this new ordinance?
No.
And it does outline specifically what would be allowed, just for some public information, if you haven't looked at the packet. Some items include bakery wholesale, canning and packing facility, brewery, distillery, bottling plants. Cleaning and cosmetic manufacturing primaries. Please remember, the square footage along that area zone is not huge. So you're not gonna have some huge industrial company come in and put in a huge plant. Food product manufacturing, fruit and vegetable packing plants. Laundry, laboratories.
Electroplating?
Yes. Ice and cold storage manufacturing. So it went from being very open-ended to putting very specifics.
So they struck out single-family residential, multifamily residential, mobile home?
There would be no residential.
We didn't think that should be residential area.
So machine shop welding, laundries.
Once again, with approval. Per. Per type of business.
Councilmember Stokes, any? Comment, question? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Sedate?
Aaron didn't have anything to say. I'm disappointed.
Councilmember Stevens, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the good news is, you fixed the M one problem. Well done. And I think y'all did a nice job.
I hope so.
The only question that comes in my mind, and while it's not directly related to the ordinance. It is part of, in my view, the the P and Z discussion. Do we really have that many M one places? Because if I look at where M one is right now along the tracks. There aren't many places that would really qualify or be M one. And so P and Z may wanna go back and look and say, is that really appropriate to be an M one? But relative to the ordinance, I I support what's here is the right thing to go do. But it's, I think it's the bigger question that you all have to go work.
Yeah, and 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 the way it's set now, it actually makes it easier for us, because that M one is just so confined.
Yeah.
So. But we didn't want the battery, you know, like, you know. Battery plants coming in and things like that.
Yeah, so. And 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 part of the reason I raise this, certainly we're talking along where the M one exists, where the Union Pacific Line runs. But as the Trans-Pacific Line starts heading north and they start getting that going, as the Bridge Open Commerce starts working. You all gotta think about what's the appropriate zoning locations along there right now, which most of them are residential.
Residential.
And boy, that's, as you think about safety from rail and everything else. That's, that's something I think you guys are gonna have to take a look at. With this in place, you can now start thinking about that.
And with this in place, we can at least regulate it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't quote me, but I believe there are some guidelines and restrictions on the zoning related specifically to the railroad. That they are nine and a ten times zones specifically in industrial.
Yeah, I'd support that. I just, I know a lot of our stuff along that are not industrial.
No, but we also do have it where if someone wanted to request a reason.
Yeah.
They would be tied to that and can go back directly. We do have several lots that are empty.
Okay, good.
Okay, any other discussion, council? All right, thank you, Mr. Walter. All right, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. City secretary, it passes unanimously unanimously to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two dash oh two. All right, moving on to action item number three. This one belongs to councilmember Nance.
So this was just a. I guess the resolution that you helped me write up, and it's basically based off last year's. And everything we kind of spoke about at the last meeting, curtailing that list of nine tasks for the park board down to five. So just wanted to thank, if this passes, thank everyone, cause I think next Wednesday we'll be meeting and we can divvy these up and start working on.
So move.
Okay, so I need a motion for us to discuss. Okay, I need a second. Okay, any other discussion?
I think it was good.
Okay. All right, let's vote. All in favor to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two dash oh one, raise your right hand. City secretary, it passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action item number four, city manager.
Approved Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two dash oh two. A resolution authorizing the Environmental Services Department to participate in the Keep Texas Beautiful. And the Texas Department of Transportation's Governor's Community Achievement Award Program.
I need a motion. Okay, so we have a motion, and councilmember Stevens, you're gonna second. All right, any discussion?
Just a little background, so the public is aware, and those who are online, the city has applied for this on multiple occasions. It is not awarded repeatedly. They do have a, about a four or five-year period before we actually become eligible again. But we continuously apply because we like to stay within good standing, and we have a lot to shout about with our recycling program. And so we like to make sure that we keep, not only the Keep Texas Beautiful. Program up to date with what's going on, but also text that. This is a, I call it a non-cash brand. If you've noticed the four signs that coming into Alpine, that says Alpine welcomes you, that is a governor achievement award. So we are kind of excited and hopeful, cross our fingers that we do get awarded. First place comes up with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And Adalina already has a lot of thoughts and projects and plans of how she'd like to utilize that money. Including assisting with the poetry probe and the the water drainage along Loop Road.
All right, any discussion, any questions? Councilmember Stevens?
Such an expensive endeavor, twenty-five dollar entry fee. Not a bad return if we get a hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Right. Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Nance?
I was just gonna say, that was a heck of an application. Is that Marcy or Adalina?
That's both.
Nice job.
So Adalina provides a lot of the backup documentation, cause she has to keep track of all the pictures, the programs, the statistics. And Marcy helps assemble it into a more. Compressed file.
Shout out to those people.
Yes, thank you, Adalina. Thank you, Marcy.
I think it's great that they keep doing that. But if we don't get it, it's practice for them to. Put these things together.
Anything else? Yeah, councilmember Stokes. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand to approve twenty twenty-four dash oh two dash. All in favor, please raise your right hand to approve twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh two. City Secretary, it passes unanimously. All right, moving on to action item number five, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh three, a resolution authorizing the city's police department to participate in the Office of the Governor's Public Safety Office Rifle Resistant Body Armor Grant Program for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager.
So each year, the governor's office opens up, this year twenty six grants, the city was eligible for thirteen. We narrowed it down to four. Three of them are at the deadline of February eighth to have everything submitted. As part of the approval process, I like to include the resolution, even though sometimes we have to come back and amend the resolution based on what they'd like. This one in particular is to purchase ten rifle resistant vests for the Alpine Police Department. And they're looking at about forty two hundred dollars for this grant. So prior before we even apply, we go through and we actually try to get the quotes in what it would cost because we are required to submit a budget within this grant.
Councilmember Stokes?
Oh, I think it's great. I need everyone that could do.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I agree. If it weren't for the grants that we go out, we wouldn't have the equipment they have.
Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Stevens? Hey, if there's no more discussion, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, so resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh three passes unanimously, city secretary. All right, moving on to action item number six, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh four, a resolution authorizing the city's police department to participate in the Office of the Governor's Public Safety Office Bullet Resistant Shield Grant Program for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
I need a motion. I need a second.
So I got that.
Okay, discussion, starting with city manager.
This is the same as the prior one, except for this one is specific to actual shields that are bullet resistant. The city is looking at obtaining five shield with a estimated request budget of thirty eight thousand and seventy dollars.
Councilmember Stokes?
Once again, highly needed.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Nance?
Only question I had is, I saw that number thirty eight thousand. Does all this work similar to like approved vendors and everything else? I mean, I know you can't go buy bulletproof shields at Best Buy. How does this, it's our list of?
So no, so Daryl's team does a lot of research trying to find vendors that one meet the qualifications of what we're trying to purchase. Once they narrow down the vendors, then it's our responsibility on the finance side to make sure that they are, they pack what we call SAMs, which is a system awarded management system. They're vetted by the United States, so they have to be compliant with that. And then, of course, we still have to follow the state procurement. So even though this grant is thirty eight thousand, if they find one vendor that they love for multiple grants, we would still have to procure either based on a purchasing co-op or through an RFP, Request for Proposal. It doesn't just in when we submit it. There's still all the background to get the actual item purchased.
Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Stevens? If there's no more discussion, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. City Secretary, twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh four, resolution passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number seven, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh five, a resolution authorizing the city's police department to participate in the Office of the Governor Public Safety Office Edward Ryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, JAG, for the fiscal year twenty twenty five.
I need a motion. I need a second.
Sure.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
So this grant is slightly different. It's not equipment specific. The city of Alpine Police Department is looking at utilizing this grant for additional overtime to enhance the border security of our area as well as two mobile security cameras and two digital messaging boards. The messaging boards have come in a lot of help. Texts out to even borrow them. So they are informative, but we do need to keep up with them. We do have four areas of town to cover, especially with the four ways in. And the estimated, which this is definitely an estimate, is about a hundred and three thousand, based on the most recent quote we got, we're looking at closer to a hundred and twenty five thousand.
All right, Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Rodriguez?
These are good because it enables Daryl to use these officers and it doesn't actually cost the city. So he's able to be out there and have a little bit more visibility.
And, and just so counsel, and I know Daryl hates me because we have to keep up with it, but we do have a statistics portion of this that we are required to keep up with as well. So even when they pull someone over, it's how many felonies, arrests, what was confiscated. So there is a whole reporting factor. It's not just go out and work. It's coming back with the data that helps build these brands to continue to sustain them.
And it's not easy. It's a lot of reporting. It's a lot of data gathering. And, you know, people say, you know, it's easy money for them. It's not. It's a lot of work. And I know Daryl has, I know there used to be somebody that just, that's what they did, made sure that all the data was collected.
Councilmember Nance?
A couple of quick questions. So the original estimate was a hundred and three thousand, now it's one twenty five. One twenty five still a hundred percent covered?
Yes, these are zero matched. Now, I understand that our resolutions indicate that the city would provide extra. Are we with support if there is a match? That's only if something changes or goes south. Nine out of ten times when we go to our overtime grants, we work over what has been provided by the state because we're not, oh, I got five minutes and I, oh, I gotta stop because I'm over that limit. We don't regulate it to that degree. So there is some times where the city does cover a little of the additional. But the state does step in and cover what they indicated as a hundred percent.
And then the digital messages, it said these were going to replace at end of life. What is the life cycle of a digital message board?
Does it get hit by a vehicle?
Two days.
So the message boards that we currently have, we've got those through grant probably about, say about twelve years ago. And they have really outlasted their, their battery life. And so these, these will basically take over the, the use of these, the other two that we have, and the other ones are still usable. We'll use them, not as, not as hard as, as we have been using them. So they've, they've outlasted definitely, so.
Ten years, good, even twelve. And then the last question, you were talking about data for the grants and all the stuff that you guys have to do. Is all that done by Kologic?
No, that's done by me.
That's done by Kodarol.
Yeah, so basically, what, what I do is I go in, in, well, my, my dispatch supervisor, he provides me the stats every month. I go through those and then I kind of weed through that, make sure that I have all the correct numbers. And then when we say we have a felony arrest, we also have to figure out, all right. If there's a rest, I have to separate it between felonies and misdemeanors. And then I also, if we, if we deal with migrants, I also have to separate it between juveniles and adults, all those types of things.
So you as a human are doing all the data disaggregation and everything else.
And so we do actually have a, a paper form that when they work and overtime like this, they have to.
Yeah, we have three officers that pretty much hit it pretty hard. And so they're required, along with their time sheet that they turn in, they, they turn in their stats for for the operation. And then also, they have to do a separate time sheet that indicates that time, so.
And they're not free to go out and do whatever they want, like run traffic and stuff like that, right?
Right.
It's just so specific on everything that he allows them to do.
But this is an addition. This isn't, I'm going to work my shift. This is there specifically working.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sedat?
The one thing I wanted to add too is that we, I love my cameras and thank you all so much for, for helping me by the last two cameras. I'm, I've requested two more on this grant. They are such a great deterrent. Megan loves her little beacon that flashes.
I'm just wondering why it's over there on our bread lot side of the world for so long? What is it?
Right, so it's just the, the concentration on the area. If I could spread them out, set them all in different places, I definitely would. I, I pulled one off of the Murphy Street, took it back to the PD so I can do some some preventive maintenance on it. And so, yeah, if, and the price on those has gone up twelve thousand dollars. And so there's, but they are a great deterrent.
Nice, because you don't concentrate on that area.
Yes, yeah.
You don't have the people you need, so that gives you a couple more eyes out there.
Yes, yes, definitely. Yeah. And, and that's one of the requirements that I'm supposed to show on our cameras. Any arrests or citations that are, that my cameras assist, you know, so we've done that. So.
Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Stevens? Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of resolution twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh five, please raise your right hand. City Secretary, twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh five passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number eight, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight is approved order twenty twenty four dash zero two dash zero one, in order of special election for May fourth, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of electing one Ward One Councilmember for the remaining unexpired term ending May twenty twenty five, with early voting from April twenty second, twenty twenty four to April thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, discussion? City Secretary?
Do you all have any questions?
Discussion, all right.
As soon as it's approved, the filing period begins tomorrow.
Okay.
And it ends on March fourth, if I can.
And all this is on the website, too?
It's all on the website, yes. And the packet is already available to pick up in my.
Okay. All right, if there's no discussion, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, order number twenty twenty four dash oh two dash oh one for special election has been approved unanimously. Moving on to action item number nine, city manager.
Approved the twenty twenty four high intensity drug traffic area Hyda application.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager.
The city of Alpine has had this grant in place for over twenty years. It is fully funded by the Office of its O N D C P. If you ask me, I cannot tell you what the acronym stands for.
The Hyda one?
Yeah, it is a federal grant. It funds three positions, the salaries and the benefits, as well as two leased vehicles and the maintenance and, and deal that goes with them, as well as up to eleven thousand a year in overtime.
Councilmember Stevens?
For two hundred and forty thousand dollars is great.
Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Stokes? Okay, if there's no questions or discussion, all in favor to approve the twenty twenty four high intensity drug traffic area application, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, it passed unanimously, twenty twenty four high intensity drug traffic area application. All right, action item number ten, city manager.
Approved Permian paving in the amount of forty eight thousand for the completion of a taxiway paving around hangars forty five and forty six at the Alpine Casperus Municipal Airport.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, discussion, city manager.
I just want the council to understand why this is particularly on the agenda. We do have a procurement policy or process that we follow. This has been an ongoing issue for the individuals who own and operate these hangars. In twenty 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 one, they constructed and built several T hangars. We were able to get part of the paving done in twenty two. Through A and R, he specifically negotiated for that part of the airport. Last year, we went out for two RFPs, got zero responses for the continuation. Because of the cost of this and some of the quoting we were getting back, we followed the procurement. This one does fall under the fifty thousand Request for Proposal Procurement Threshold. And I want to make it clear that we're asking for permission to move forward with this in light of the fact that we have yet to get other quotes. And this is the only company who has repeatedly provided a quote. I like to say each time it kind of goes down. So they are very eager to participate. Although this isn't directly budgeted within the operating budget of the airport, this is something the city does need to wholeheartedly do. And I do want to remind the council that the city of Alpine did receive a ninety ten RAP grant, which is the Routine Airport Maintenance Program, where the text dot aviation will cover up to ninety percent of the cost. Will we use the remaining portion out of the airport's facility maintenance? You will have me coming back before council at some point during this year to probably amend their budget to be able to cover it. But this is something that's been much needed. And the timing has been perfect with the RAP grant and the one individual company that has, has been consistently interested in the project.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes?
I've fought for this for three years. I think it's wonderful. I'm going to go out there, drive my car out on them. Take pictures, selfies.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Long overdue, and I think we've kept these people waiting long enough. Let's get it done.
Councilmember Nance?
Questions?
Councilmember Sedate? Councilmember Stevens? Okay, if there's no more questions or discussion, all in favor of approving this, please raise your right hand. All right, city secretary, unanimously, the council has approved Permian paving in the amount of forty eight thousand for the completion of taxiway paving around hangars forty five and forty. All right, so that leads us to council member comments. Councilmember Stokes?
But y'all, I'd like to thank Catherine for bringing Siri to our meeting and disrupt everything. It wasn't, I wasn't the only one. I've gotten lots of, lots of calls from people who voted for me and my supporters, and I want to thank all them for understanding my decision. Megan, thanks for that great four hour report that involved many numbers that I hate. Daryl did good with his racial profiling and explaining the non stuff. Wait, hold on. Do what this says. Oh, I'm glad everybody fixed that pie because, you know, everybody should have always been out helping our guys fix this stuff. And it's really nice to see that they finally, you know, we could go help those guys.
Right.
Good idea. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just want to stress what Megan said about the guys being out there. There's always so many people that are eager to complain. I was there that evening. There was cooperation with everybody. I want to thank Megan for being out there. I don't know that all of your work, but she does go out. She's there. If the guys need anything, you don't have to track her down and try to get something. The guys were tired. It was cold. And I think that's something that people need to understand before they complain.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
I too would like to thank the water team for all the work they did and everyone else, including the county. I think we've now had a good substantive discussion about STRs. We can go work it, and it's going to take all of us to go sort that out. Thanks to P and Z for working the M one zoning. That's all been a concern for quite some time, and you all did a great job getting that cleaned up. The last thing I'd like to mention is Daryl and I went to a text dot rural transportation or transportation improvement plan across seven counties, all the way from El Paso down to Brewster County. They were making a vest on about two hundred and forty four million dollars. It was, they had a bazillion charts in there. In terms of all the stuff they got going on, it was a little disappointing how many people didn't show up because they really are looking for comments on the back on the counter, next to the cookies. As you head out, take a cookie and take the flyer and take a comment sheet, because they really are looking for comments about how to go spend that money. That is our tax dollars that works at two hundred and forty four million dollars if they're kind of playing. I did use the opportunity also talk about what went on in the sixty seven corridor study that was done in two thousand and eighteen. That was one of the comments I sent back in and asked the text that folks to says, hey, we really would like to get some feedback about what the strategy and plans are for that, particularly given we have five intersections that were rated during that study, now six years old. It says we ran anywhere from a rate of B to a D that we're going to a C to an F. So Tech Scott's got that comment. I know they'll come back because they committed to come back with, we heard you loud and clear, we got to go do some work on that. And we need a much better mechanism, you know, going back and forth on that. So probably the only other one is I know there's, and Megan, you know more about this than I do. There's a meeting coming up in the next few weeks that will talk about what's going on with the railroad bridge. I know Megan's been working real hard to get council and the, and the commissioner's court together to go work that. But that'll be something I know will be lots of interest, a lot of people. And there are a number of different solutions that they're often considering, but the more we listen, the more engaged, the better solution we're going to get out of that. Because none of us like trucks running into that bridge. Because none of us like trucks running into that bridge. That's the comments I have.
And I want to point out that Megan was there at that water leak well past one AM that evening. Um and the team, I guess they continued the whole evening. I don't know. Did they get to take a break?
No, we we left the site about one-thirty and then we all reconvened at nine AM Saturday. Um assess the situation. We can't just fill in the hole with water and have to let it dry out. Um after a lot of discussion and me getting a little upset, um we made the decision, the team came back out Sunday. Um the wind was in our favor to help dry it out. And we're able to assess it. We utilized TechSots' safety control um features so that our team would be safe. So they actually finished it Saturday about two.
So that was good about the wind. Yeah.
Yes, you don't understand how much that made me feel happy. Our four hundred thousand dollar paperweight is actually up in years.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Gee, it's a big truck out there with the certain, the big hose. That was phenomenal.
I'm describing, Megan's not an hourly employee because we just wouldn't be able to afford or would.
No, no, and I want to thank our zoning and planning members for being here tonight. We have the chairperson and two members here, so thank you guys for that. And with that, let's dismiss. Meeting adjourned.